Okay.
Okay.
All right, and we should be good.
Okay, all right, we're live. Wait, we just lost Aaron. Okay Frank, you're the host now.
Oh, here.
There he is. All right, now he's back. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're starting a little late. This is the Village of Marineric Planning Board Meeting, October 27, 2021. We're trying to make sure everyone who needs to be on this Zoom call is here. We're missing our new land use secretary who started with us a week ago. So hopefully she'd be able to join us soon. When she does, we'll introduce her. But in the meantime, for the purposes of the minute taker, I need to just state the names of all the people in attendance. So that it can go into the minutes. So we have the four planning board members, myself, Cindy Goldstein, Ellen Styler, and Richard Littman. We have our land use attorney, Teresa Baker-Bachner, excuse me. We have our consulting engineer, John Keller, our landscape architect consultant, Susan Oakley. We have Frank Tavolachi, the building inspector, and we have from AKRF as our planner tonight, Aaron Werner, W E R N E R from AKR. And hopefully Brittany will be joining us soon. Okay. So for anyone watching or zooming in with us, you may have seen an agenda. It was revised earlier today. Item number three was removed from the agenda by the applicant. So we have three items on the agenda. We'll consider the minutes from October 13th, and then there's a site plan review for 888 Orient Avenue. And then the board will discuss the newly enacted tree law and will be joined by the chairperson of the village tree committee for that. Okay. Right, I think that's everything to begin with. Okay, so we have before us minutes of the October 13th meeting, which was our last meeting. And so if anybody has any comments, I would like to start off the comments with on the first page where we list people who were in attendance. I think Susan, you weren't with us last time because there wasn't anything on the agenda for you, is that correct? So the minute should not say excuse slash absentee, it just should basically say excuse because Susan doesn't have to come if there isn't anything for her to talk about. So that needs to just be corrected. And then embedded in this, in these minutes is the resolution that we passed for 1600 Harrison Avenue. But it's a marked up copy of the resolution and it should be the final copy with no markups on it. So that needs to be corrected. Here we are, Brittany is with us. Okay, when she comes on, we'll introduce her and include her in the... So those are the comments that I had. Does anybody else have any comments?
No.
No? Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the minutes as amended?
No, moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Then I vote yes. Brittany, can you turn your video on?
Trying to work it out, hold on one second.
When Brittany comes on.
Oh, there we go.
There we go, okay. All right, everyone, let's introduce Brittany O'Neal, our new land use secretary. Did I get that right?
Yes, land use board secretary, I think, that's a short word.
Brittany joined us last week from the town of Marineric, I believe.
Yorktown, I was in the town of Marineric previously.
From the town of Yorktown and the town of Marineric before that. And Brittany is a local person. Some of you may know O'Neal's Country Store on Marineric Avenue. So Brittany is somebody who is familiar with the community. And she's also familiar somewhat with building, she worked in building department around the area. She knows some of the players and she knows some of the terminology. We're all working together to streamline processes for Brittany so that the land use boards operate smoothly. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so this brings us to item three on the agenda, which is the site plan review for 888 Orient Avenue.
Eight six, Kathy.
Eight six, I'm sorry. Eight six, and I'm looking right at it and I still got her. Okay.
Beverly Sharid and Nicole Thomas Sula, I believe, are they the applicant reps? Raise your hand if you are and I can promote you.
Do we have, we have no one here?
I see Beverly Sharid and he pulled.
Any person, I don't know, I don't know the name of the other person. So Beverly's for the next item on the agenda. We have no one here for the applicant. That's interesting. They obviously were on the agenda, right?
If you're on the applicant team, please raise your hand.
No, it doesn't look like we have anybody here for me. This is strange. Okay. I don't feel like I have comments and questions before we make a decision on this particular site plan. But if no one's here to answer them, I don't see how we can go forward. Does anybody disagree with me?
Chair, you might want to talk about the tree law to give them some time to sign in. They may have thought that since they were the second on the agenda.
Well, yeah, that's a good point.
Change today, yeah.
Yeah. Very good point. Okay, we'll table this for a short period of time and turn our attention to the newly enacted Village of Marineric tree law, which the Board of Trustees passed a couple of weeks ago. And has some implications for the planning board. So Aaron, if you could promote Beverly as a panelist. Beverly is the chairperson of the tree committee and spent a lot of blood and sweat and tears and a lot of time. Beverly, yes, there she is, hi Beverly. Okay. Before we get into the nitty gritty of this, I have to congratulate you on getting this done. Reminded, when I first got involved with the village, it was the election cycle of 2000. And I got elected 21 years ago. I'm old. And on our list of things to do while we were in office that season, and Cindy will remember it well, was to enact a new tree law. And you finally got it done, so.
It's been a long journey, though. I've been on the tree committee 10 years and we started this at my first meeting.
Wow. So, yeah, so you know, while this isn't perfect, kudos for getting it done.
Thank you.
You know, I have a couple of questions and comments and I've asked the other members of the planning board to look at it. And our land use attorney, who is Teresa Bachner, to look at it. And I'm not sure if AKRF looked at it, Aaron, and if Ashley left you any notes or anything. But, um, you know, there's some cool things, I know you hate to you hate to have to change something, but there's at least one thing that we feel that's important that has to get changed on the code. But we can go through this sort of page by page, or I don't know how anybody wants to do it. One thing I noticed throughout is there are several references to documents or information. And it's referenced that a copy is available for public review in the building inspector's office. And I was wondering if that couldn't also be posted online.
I think that's a really good idea. In fact, I think we were planning to do that.
Yeah. Good, where is, wait, where's Susan? Did Susan fall off?
No, Susan's there.
I'm here.
Oh, hey, okay. I just don't see everybody anymore. Oh, there you are, okay, yes. I'm sorry, I will also introduce Susan Oakley, although Beverly, you may have heard.
I actually know Susan, she was on the tree committee when I joined it 10 years ago.
All right, Susan is our landscape architect consultant and she has comments as well. So that, that, that she'll participate in this discussion also, that's what I want to say. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my comments, trying to figure them out.
I mean, I know, I know the land use boards all had an opportunity to review this, I think maybe multiple times.
Yeah, we've had times, you know.
I tended to focus on responsibilities of the planning board, figuring that any other extraneous thoughts I had, you know, about the document, you know, whatever, whatever was hammered out with the Board of Trustees and the public during the public hearings, I really didn't feel like I wanted to comment on. So I stuck strictly with planning board issues and questions. And I have some questions about the law, how it works and how it integrates with the building inspector's role. So I don't know, Kathy, however you want to go through it, I'm fine, if you want to go page by page. Or again, I didn't focus on stuff that didn't affect us.
Well, same here with me, although if I, I have some questions about it. Because you know, we define diameter at breast height or DBH as four and a half feet above the ground level from the base. And I think, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood because there are a couple of other times it's mentioned that, you know, like the tree, the definition of the tree preservation plan, which is very key now for us. Because we have to now receive with every application that's before us now, they have to now submit a tree preservation plan because the law is enacted immediately. Or going forward, we have to now start reviewing tree preservation plans that we understand what it is that's being required in the tree preservation plan. So it says that the contours of the plot have to be shown at not more than two feet. The DBH and conditions of all trees, eight inches of DBH or higher or greater have to be shown. So I think, I think that that seems to be consistent throughout. But I just want to point this out to the, to the planning board, that this is something new for us. It's a new document, the landscaping plan that we've seen in the past with the, with the charts on the bottom of them are no longer sufficient. Okay, this is something.
And since you're, you know, you're working with the building department and new staff. And this will have to get integrated into the packet of information that applicants get. That they have to be, you know, aware that this is something that they need to do. I don't think, you know, so this is maybe really good timing in terms of you're looking at trying to streamline things and make things easier for applicants and for land use board members in the building department and the planning department. So we should make sure that, you know, in whatever instructions we distribute to people inquiring at the building department, that they understand what, what this is. And maybe this definition of tree preservation plan could be reproduced in whatever documents. So it's easy for them to find to know what the requirements are.
There's talk of the checklist, an applicant has to check off as a cover sheet to their application at some point going forward as it's being developed and, you know, making sure they have everything. And obviously this has to be attached to it. But, but I did focus my attention mostly on questions with regards to the planning board. And, and one of them is Beverly, there's a lot of discussion here about subdivisions and site plans. But we also issue permits for wetlands permits for work within the wetlands buffer. So that is, the law is silent on our wetlands permits, was that intentional or just oversight?
No, it was done in ignorance, I think.
You mentioned, you mentioned trees in or in close proximity to a wetland.
We do, we do. In fact, that was a comment I remember getting from Kathy. That's.
So, so if, if a review of a tree preservation plan was intended for us to review with all the permits and the approvals we give, then the wetlands permit should have been included along with the subdivision and the site plan. And it should be included then as a document that needs to be included with the application.
All right.
But that's not.
Couldn't we, rather than trying to list all the different things that we do, because that could get changed over the years. There's been talk that to give the wetlands permit to HCZMC since they're doing consistency. And so couldn't we just say all, all applications in front of the planning board need, need this tree preservation plan? Instead of trying to list.
We don't need it for wireless television.
Yeah, you don't need it for all of them.
We don't need it for all of them. We do some other things, you know, that have nothing to do with trees.
Yeah, not, not many, though.
Try, though.
Or they, then they just say not applicable. I mean, then that's, you know, I don't know. I just, I was like sort of a broad definition.
Well, this is where, this is where the lawyers have to get involved with the land.
Oh, then we have no chance.
Wait, Theresa's going to take offense to that.
Okay, now I'm afraid to talk, but I was, I was just going to point out that they would still need a tree preservation permit from Frank. So even in those situations where you may have something in front of the planning board that doesn't expressly indicate that the planning board can issue the tree preservation plan approval, they still have to get it from Frank. So it's not going to be missed or anything.
Okay. In, in article five, it mentions, I believe it's article five, article four D. Under prohibitions, it says, no permit is required for the removal of a tree or trees in accordance with a tree preservation plan approved by the planning board.
That's right, but where there is no requirement for the planning board, right here, it says this applies to site plan and subdivision.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, in the definition?
No, in the next sentence down.
In that, in that, right. So in other words, somebody's coming for site plan or subdivision approval. As part of our overall approval for that, we're going to, you know, by definition, approve the tree preservation plan and give them permission to remove some trees. So they don't need a separate and additional permit from the building inspector to do that. On the wetlands permit, there would be then a different process where we would make a decision about the wetlands, the, the work they want to do in the wetlands or the wetlands buffer. And then they also would then need to get a permit from Frank to, or his successor or their office to then remove any trees. Now Frank, I don't know if you're comfortable with different procedures for different things to go to the planning board?
Kathy, I think also it's certainly true that as part of any mitigation plan that you guys would look at for wetlands impacts or stream impacts, you would have a requirement just under the wetlands law to look at what vegetation's being removed and what vegetation's being replaced.
Right.
So you would still have all the authority to review it. It's just, you don't, you don't get to trump everybody else.
Well, you know, it just to me is, is when, when you're applying different procedures to similar things, you confuse applicants.
Yeah.
It's a little messy, that's all, that's all.
It's worth changing.
So.
I'm not sure how it is I should be changing this.
Well, let's just put it on the list, we can always language smith it later.
Okay.
Okay, Frank, are you comfortable with that?
Sure, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. And another question I had, and I just wanted to clarify, in the very next paragraph to that E, section four E, it says, no tree may be removed on application for site plan development approval or subdivision is pending before the planning board. And I think that's excellent because we've had people remove their trees and remove other trees that aren't theirs before they come to us. But is there ever a situation where they're, they are before another board before they come to us? I don't think so. To make sure, because they, usually if they have to go to zoning board, they come to us first. So it's still pending before us. Or they go to HCZM. Is there any, any situation where somebody might go to zoning board for approval for something and then come to planning board? And they, it leaves a little window then for some to remove trees.
I think there's much more than a little window here. I could drive a Mack truck through this window. Because what we found, and I think these were some of our comments, and obviously they didn't get incorporated into the law. It's not a question of them removing trees when they've already put in an application. They remove all of the trees and show up with an application a month, a two months, three months later, you know, asking for forgiveness rather than asking for permission. And that's where I think the really egregious massive clear cutting tree removal violations take place. So I'm not particularly worried about what they do while they have a site plan application going. It's what they do in those months beforehand.
They have to still get a permit from Frank.
Yeah, if I may, this is still private property and it's now protected by this law. They have to have a permit.
They have to have a permit for me.
They have no site plan at all.
Right.
Yeah, it's just, we know, I mean, there's other sections of the code that actually keep them. Nobody.
Well, I think it's, I think it's very explicit under 318-8 that you, to remove trees, certain trees on private property, that you need to have a permit issued by the building inspector. So that's even if you don't ever have to get site plan or special or subdivision. And, and Mr. Tavolachi in the building department is going to be able to enforce against people if they, they don't get that permit.
We're in the process right now on weekends, many times trees are cut down on weekends. And we're trying to get more code enforcers out on weekends. That's what we're going to be doing moving forward, to catch these people that are cutting trees down. Especially before the fact, before they go before boards if they're doing it like that.
Okay, well, that's good because, you know, enforcement was a question I had. Because things do happen. All right.
Can I go back to another part of 318-8 that I, I want to make sure I understand it? Because my first reading of it, it seems inconsistent or contradictory. So 318-8B talks about the building inspector being able to grant a permit to remove a protected tree on private property to the extent necessary if, and then there are four items. Item three talks about subdivisions and wetlands permits. So it's not completely clear to me, at least at initial reading. So it looks like either the building inspector could do it as part of the site plan subdivision plat or wetland permit, or the planning board could do it. I, I'm having trouble figuring out exactly who does what. Because this seems to give the power to two entities, planning board and building inspector. Am I reading this wrong?
I think, I think what this is meant to say, Cindy, the way I would read it is it's upholding the provision that comes later on that says no permit is required for the removal of a tree or trees in accordance with the tree preservation plan approved by the planning board. So this is, this is just saying that if a protected tree is shown on a on the plan that's approved by the planning board, then it can be removed. That, that's how I read that.
I think it's really confusing and it looks to me like the building inspector can grant the permit. But we've just had recitations that it's the planning board pursuant to a tree preservation plan as part of a site plan or other appropriate planning board review.
Well, it says is specifically identified for removal in an approved wetlands permit, special use permit, subdivision plat, site plan or landscape plan. So that would be, the only people that can approve that is you guys, the planning board, right? And the ZBA, the ZBA could have a special use permit.
But, but this is saying that he can issue that permit.
Right.
But normally a permit is not required if it's under planning board review. So if I'm confused, I'm thinking applicants might be confused too.
I mean, I, I agree it's confusing. I see, I understand what Theresa's saying. But you know, if you, if you read the beginning, it says removal of protected trees in accordance with a permit issued by the building inspector. The building inspector may grant a permit to remove the protected tree on private to the extent necessary if the protected tree interferes with permitting used previously or, and or is specifically identified for removal. Now, we just said the wetlands permit isn't included in this section of the code for, for the, although we will be reviewing vegetation as Theresa puts out. Special use permit also wasn't mentioned for anything that we have to get a tree plan for special permit. Subdivision, site plan or landscape plan. Now normally we get a landscape plan, which is now going to be replaced or enhanced by the tree preservation plan. So it is, I think it may be a little redundant, but also confusing because it includes exceptions here that are not the purview or not listed as the purview of the planning board.
And, and I'm pretty sure somewhere it clearly says you don't need a permit from the building inspector if the planning board's doing a review. And this is saying he may issue the permit.
Yeah, D, that's further along, Cindy, on D.
So.
You're, you're, you're right, there's inconsistency there. I flagged it, but I didn't write down what my note was.
It's confusing.
Yeah, and then it goes on to talk about trees in a wetland area as well.
Oh, yeah, I have, I have trouble with that.
Right, because, you know, I would much prefer to have this whole thing. Right, because you know, I would much prefer to have this whole thing wrapped up with our review of wetlands permits instead of kind of piecemeal in here. Um, but if a tree is in a wetland area and more than two trees have been removed in, in the preceding two twenty-four months and they, then they, they there, we cannot permit a, a grant a permit. There, we can't, they can't do anything. So. So it's um, it's a little unclear.
And I, and I don't understand that about the wetlands because why, if you have a dangerous or diseased tree, why can't you get a permit to remove it, even if it's in the wetlands, if it's gonna fall on something or it's got a disease? Why can't you get a permit to take it out?
Well, if you look at K, it would imply that they can grant such a emergency removal.
But it's contradictory, how, who is saying the building inspector can't give a permit for that?
No, but the village manager or the village manager's designee can determine that a tree is a dangerous tree.
I, I, again, I think it could be made clearer with a reference to that section then, because it looks like.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's almost like um, they kicked up emergency removals related to dangerous trees to a higher level so that, you know, you could be sure that there were actually emergencies that were warranting the removal. Was, was that the thought behind it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Beverly, I hope you don't feel like we're beating you up.
No, no, I was prepared.
A lot of things, you know, that were here, uh, we wouldn't expect you to cap. You're not an attorney. You don't write laws.
So, no, and the, the attorney who, I'm sure somebody helped with the law, but um, may not have been familiar with, with the land use board process or really um, you know, how the planning board works.
Right.
Um.
Well, the, the other good thing about this is it requires the referral by the planning board to the tree committee for the tree committee's views under section seven.
I, I didn't think that was mandatory, it was optional.
Right, I don't think it's mandatory either. I think it was.
It's discretionary.
Yeah.
Right, well, why would you want to refer something if it was just one or two trees? But I mean, the, the intent of it obviously is to involve the tree committee where, you know, you would like to have the views of the tree committee, you know what I mean?
Right, but it's not mandatory.
Well, you, would you want it to be sending?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, alright.
Oh, no, I, you know, I, I, I think the planning board, this one and future ones can handle it. But it's nice to have that option to.
If we feel, if we feel that there's something bigger and we want to involve other members of the community and other members, I, you know, I think that that's a like, for instance, we had, we were doing Hampshire. That would have been a perfect opportunity to involve the tree committee.
Yes.
Okay, um, okay. I, I, I have a question about, um, let's see, this is on page eight, uh, uh, section uh, uh, eight, um, G, conditions. Um, about requiring uh, replacement trees. Um, and, and this was part of our comments back a year ago, which was the last time we commented on, on a draft law. Um, so we're breaking requirements down for lots less than fourteen thousand five hundred square feet and lots more than fourteen thousand.
Yes.
Um, and so, uh, you know, if it's a small tree, uh, no planting, if it's a larger tree, you know, then they have to plant for the smaller lots. For the larger lots, where they have more room, we're requiring more trees to be planted.
Based on the size of the tree they've taken.
Based on the size, but what, we, we have an application before us right now where they're taking down six trees. Now they're six small trees, but they're, they're, they're proposing to take down six trees. It's a commercial property on Boston Post Road, that's all asphalt. Now, they probably are under eight inches, although I don't know for sure because we don't have a tree plan from them. We don't even have a landscape plan from them. They're working on it. So we now have to tell them they have to do this new document. Um. Susan has already commented that they should be doing some street trees there if they can, if their utilities and things under the sidewalk aren't in the way, which is always an issue when you're on a major street like that. Um, but what do we do? Just let them take the trees down and we don't make them replant anything?
Um, I don't. I mean, it's wrong. My, my feeling is that when, once you get a site plan to review and approve, you can do whatever you want. I don't think this is saying that you may not.
No, we can't really do whatever we want. We have. I mean, I'd love to, you know, we tried to get them, okay, please, okay, you're taking six trees down, plant a tree in the front somewhere, plant some street trees. But oftentimes when we're dealing with commercial lots like this, the lots are just all paved or they're just too small. And, you know, they need to expand the parking lot and they have to take down a tree that's there or something, you know, uh. It, it, was there any consideration, you know, on situations like that giving us some leeway to require them to plant a tree someplace, you know? Uh, you know, can't put it on their property. I know we, I talked to you a little bit about like a tree bank, you know, and giving us money to plant a tree like in the park or someplace else. You know, we do have probably some uh, heat zones, you know? Uh, there's a whole big study now on disparity uh, in communities.
Right now.
Uh, sections of communities are heat zones and they're much hotter because there are no trees there. Wouldn't it be great if we had people who can't fit a tree on their property to give us money to put a tree someplace where it would do benefit for other people, you know? But I know how hard that would be to manage and to maintain and things like that too. So I just was wondering if there was any discussion to give us a little bit of leeway um, to try to address some of the, uh, the things that are important in our community.
Well, we did talk about the idea of setting up a tree bank that you just described. And we didn't, decided not to, because it seemed to have a real risk of being an out, you know, everybody was gonna want to pan to the tree bank instead of replacing trees on their own property.
They can't do that without our permission.
Um, well, on, I bet, I've been other, um, properties that are not in front of the planning board.
Yeah, but Frank still has to give them a permit and he's the one that still has to be required, so.
But if we had set up a tree.
To take the money as opposed to let them plant a tree. I mean, my attitude is if somebody has room on their property, they should be planting trees. I mean, we planted more trees than we took down in the thirty years that I've had, you know, my property. We've taken down dead trees, I, you know, I plant trees. Um, neighbors put in a pool in the back and I had to screen it, I planted four trees. So, uh, you know, it was just, it's just a thought, you know, especially on larger lots to not require any, you know, replanting where they have the room and things like that, that would, you know, be a benefit to the entire community, you know.
You mean, if the larger lot is taking down trees under eight inches?
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, eight inches isn't a, a small tree.
I know.
Right, it's not a small tree, I mean, you know.
It's a big tree.
Yeah.
I mean, I am, it's my own hopes. They've cut all the trees that are under eight inches.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, uh, I, I have, I, I then have some things about the code, other sections of the code that uh, were, were not changed. So before we get there, just Susan, do you have anything about any of the details or anything in, in the body or any other member of the planning board or Teresa want to say anything or anybody else want to speak up?
Um, I have a couple of questions. I also, um, Kathy, echo your comment that the um, ANSI standards that were available in the building inspector's office should be made more readily available. They're mentioned five times in the tree law, so I think we should make them
Yeah.
Um, easy for the public to access. Um, I had another question. Two, two things are listed under the, in the description section, one is or definition section. One is give me a minute, please. Under protected tree or shrub,
Hmm.
Uh, letter F. It talks about um, protected native plants for our region. And then under significant tree or shrub, it talks about that the village manager will create a prepare, prepare a list of significant trees um, no later than August first.
Oh, that should have changed.
I'm wondering if those lists can be made public or available to the planning board also?
They um, will be. Uh, significant tree, obviously, I have it, I guess, first date. It was written probably in two thousand nineteen. Um. There, there will be, we also are going to post procedures for designating a tree as a significant tree so that people can propose them. Um, we have.
Do we give them a plaque? Oh, that would be good. It would be something special. You know, this is a significant tree.
Yeah, there's some amazing ones, actually.
So significant tree, the definition of significant tree is one tree in particular located in a specific place. It's not a genus and species necessarily.
Not necessarily. I mean, as I said, if it's considered a protected endangered tree by. Yes. But then there are also individ- just individual tree that can be, well, the Tom, yeah, the, the Tompkins farm oak. But I mean, directly across from my driveway, for example, is a huge elm, not elm, um, yeah, elm tree that is clearly survived that, you know, the Dutch elm disease and that's going to be proposed for the list. It can be individual trees that significant.
So also the New York State DEC's protective native plant list?
That should go into.
Yeah. Easily, easily accept. Everybody goes online for everything nowadays, so that needs to be on paper. Um, okay. Uh, okay, at the end, at the end of the, the law, there were changes made to other sections of the code to try to be consistent. Um, and unfortunately, two major sections were missed by the village attorney. Um, section, uh, um, let's see. Section three forty-eight dash twenty is a list of what's required for an application for a subdivision. The tree preservation plan has to be added to that list.
That was three four zero dash seven.
Three forty-eight dash twenty.
Forty-eight dash twenty, I really did.
I have it right up on my screen right now. And uh, three forty-two dash uh, seventy-eight lists the required submissions for site plan development, site uh, development plan. And it lists what needs to be submitted as an application for a site plan and if that too was missed. So the preservation plan has to be added to that list, because this is where people who are, will go to look, what do I have to submit for, for a subdivision? What do I have to submit for a site plan? I mean, if that's not on the list and it's not right now, um, that there, you know, we're gonna Frank's gonna be dealing with incomplete applications and then we're gonna be dealing with incomplete applications and it's just going to make everybody crazy, including the applicant. Um, so those are the two main ones that I caught, because of the two I looked at right away.
Um, I had another question regarding section three forty-two dash seventy-nine, planning board action.
Susan, just before you, before you go to that, I just, I was on mute, I'm sorry. Kathy, did you look at uh, section ten, which is three forty-eight dash twelve? It does say there that the preliminary plat must be accompanied by a tree preservation plan. Would that capture the subdivision requirements then?
Um, three forty-eight point twelve.
Dash twelve, yeah, C.
Cause uh, I, I'm looking at the, the delineated list and application for approval with subdivision plat, uh, you know, shall contain, okay, okay, so, uh, maybe we, maybe I'm looking at the wrong section then.
Yeah, and that one's under section ten. It's.
Okay, yeah, I see it. I, I see it here. Um.
I would think that it should, maybe it needs to go in both places because I think you need to have this complete a list. Any, anywhere an applicant looks, they should have the same information that's required.
I, 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 I would tend to agree with that. Dealing with applicants, I would tend to agree with that, but uh, if they caught it in one place, we didn't catch it in the other, in the other.
Repetition is okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it under site plan though.
No, it's definitely not under site plan.
Yeah, I don't.
That got missed, yeah.
And wetlands permits?
Wetlands permits are completely missed altogether.
Right, okay. So, so that, if there's, if there's a section dealing with the information submitted for those, then we need to include this there.
Right, right. It, it, right, if the decision is made to include them, then yeah, we have to, uh, yeah, submission requirements, yeah, okay. Yeah, that got, that it, it, that, that section got changed, but not the other section, okay. Okay, that, um, again, Beverly, I think you did a wonderful job here getting this done. I, did, did you feel like Chuck Schumer too closely and Joe Biden trying to get the app? And you can always tweak it later.
I did, I, I actually did.
Well, um, I, I think I sent everybody, um, also, uh, Beverly uh, was trying to make things good for applicants and for people and, and came up with some frequently asked questions um, and, and some answers for them that were on the website. Um, and uh, she, she, and Beverly, I apologize, I did not get to your email of this afternoon today. She sent me a sort of some, um, some proposed language for the question at the bottom of page one that was, um, do I need planning board approval for my site plan? You know, um, and so, you know, uh, the, the purpose of the question was to, for the applicant to ascertain where does he or she send their application? So once Beverly understood that all applications go to the building department, that answered that question. Uh, but Beverly, if you, if you need any other help with any other language, I think, you know, I don't know if Teresa had a chance to, to look at that. Um, I just wanted to make sure we were putting language in that was legally accurate. I don't want to just start. And I don't want it to be too complicated for somebody, you know.
The point of an FAQ is, you know, the.
To make it, yeah, the old principle, keep it simple.
No, that, that, that helped. I mean, I had no idea where permits came from until recently.
You've never had to get one.
No, I, I've lived a really changed life.
Right.
I thought the FAQs were great. The only, the only one you might want to add more to is the um, I want to do some construction that involves removing some trees. It's not a subdivision. Do I need planning board approval for my site plan? It would probably be better to say where you need planning board approval for the site plan, you'll also need a tree protection plan.
We could add that. I, I actually, the, um, email that Kathy's talking about from this afternoon is much simpler than what we have in front of you. Which is really, it's just now, I want to do some construction that involves removing some trees. Do I need planning board approval for my site plan? And the answer is the planning board will let you know if you need to take your plans to the planning board when you apply for building and tree permits. Um.
The building department.
Building department.
That's fine, that works fine.
No, right, that's a good, that's, that's a good way of handling it, right, okay, right.
Or, or just take out the reference to site plan completely and, and leave it more, because that's like a term of art for planning board. I, I would. I I would say just, you know, I'm doing some construction around my house and I, you know, how do I find out if I need to remove, you know, get a permit? And the building inspector is the answer for that, because throwing in the word site plan, I I think.
Okay.
Leads people to think that it's a more formal process and we don't see the average single family home.
No, I did, I did learn that recently. So wait, I want to do some construction involves removing some trees, period, how do I find out? What permits I need?
Yeah, the building inspector will guide, the building department, the building inspector will tell you.
Great.
No, it's it's really impressive Beverly that that, I mean. I I I sleep easier at night knowing that this law has been passed. It, I know it took a long time, but thank, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Beverly, I know how long you've persevered. Yes. To get this done, so you should be commended for spearheading it.
Yeah, yeah, I I really, you're a, you're a local hero. This took a long time, it was a long time coming, everybody else around us had tree laws for the longest time.
I know, in the in the years that I was working on it, a lot of municipalities in our area didn't have the ten and eleven years ago. I passed them.
Right. They had passed them and some people revised them, I'm sure.
Some people did revise.
Right, you know, once we started talking about carbon capture and climate change, you know, trees become even more important.
Well, we know, well, we had a speaker, I I realize I'm taking up your meeting time, but we had a speaker. Um, a week ago, I think, named Doug Douglas Talame, who's writ, most recently wrote a book called The Nature of Oats, she was talking about. But he has made the comment, everybody says we need something that'll take water out of the ground and carbon out of the air and we've already got it. Trees.
Okay, all right, okay, everybody good? Beverly, thank you very much.
Very good.
So it was a pleasure to have the conversation with you.
Thank you for inviting me.
I hope see you, because Beverly was around the corner for me, so just so people know, I I do pass her house every occasion. To each other as often as we should, but especially as the weather starts getting cold. Thank you, thank you very much and thanks for the work you're doing for the village. Okay, that brings us back to the other item on the agenda and I don't think we have. Someone from the applicant, we we're still. Is that correct?
Looks like it.
Okay.
There's only one attendee, Nicole Tomasula.
And she's not with the, and she's not with the applicant. So Teresa, we just don't he don't attend to this and put it on a later agenda when the applicant can.
Can come, yeah, we should just table it. And I did while you guys were on the line there, I tried to reach both the engineer and the architect with no luck, so.
All right, now, normally this would be something, Brittany, you should contact the applicant and tell them that they were on the agenda for tonight and we did not. Take any action because they weren't there to answer our questions.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
And and make sure that, you know, the next meeting, which is.
November tenth, I think.
November tenth, right, the second Wednesday in November, if we're gonna put this on the agenda, make sure somebody attends. Guess we're not in a rush, the swimming pool season is.
Unless it's heated.
Unless it's heated, right? Okay. That's it then, that was our agenda, no, but I think we got a lot done, it was a very nice conversation. We should talk to people directly more often. Get things done. Okay, so then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
That's four eyes, no nays, all right, good night, everybody, thanks very much. All right.